People, it's a ghost town. Nobody wants to be there. So we're talking about cutting and all this and spending. We need to make sure that city is safe so people will want to come back to Virginia Beach and stay at our hotels.
Okay. Nadine? Wait a minute. No, sorry. Sorry, we're going to the next question. So Gary, you get the next question. All right, so it says here, "It's arguable that natural water is the greatest concern for the city over the next 50 years. Population density rapidly descends as you travel, you know, to the southern part of the city. Sea level rise, hurricane flooding. There is a distinct point where the cost to protect certain homes and infrastructure far exceeds the value of the assets and the city will likely never be able to protect them. What would you do to accelerate flood mitigation?" I put those two together. So we start with you, Gary.
I know that's long.
That's quite a mouthful. Let's start with how we actually look at this situation. There's two words come to mind: trust and transparency. How do we, as a city council, move our economy to actually protect $65 billion worth of property due to either a catastrophic storm that will visit our area? And that's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So how do we look at our resiliency? First and foremost, you know, as a construction contractor that understands storm drainage systems, whether it's curbs, streets, canals, holding pods that are silted up, as far as our southern watershed, we're going to have to look to some of the paint tanks like ODU and some of the other people that have studied this problem for quite a while. But that doesn't mean we sit on our thumbs and just pretend that this problem is going to go away. It's not. So we're going to have to look how we're going to be able to mitigate the density
Stop, Gary.
And the paving.
Done, Gary.
Was that 15 seconds?
Yep, I already told you 15 seconds. You were talking. Nadine, you're next.
Business experience and my military experience will serve us well, guide us.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Gary. Nadine?
Thanks. So the southern watershed, we had a green line in place up until 2000, when the city council decided that it was prudent to allow builders to develop the green line. So we have added to the challenges that we now face from increment weather or intense weather patterns, failing infrastructure. We have added to that. This is a man problem and a nature problem. And the only way we're going to fix this is to stop our spot zoning that we seem to be doing as a way to plan for the city. Westminster is an example. Wolf Brothers is an example, where we do not adhere to our own ordinances and instead just create more density in areas that are fragile. So we have to get smarter and we have to look forward down the road with every single decision we make because we are one of the most fragile coastal cities in the country. And anyone who's been sitting on city council for 20 years, 30 years should know that.
Thank you. Sabrina?
One thing that I have noticed since I've been on council is that some of the areas that we have that are concerned when it comes to flooding is the fact that routine maintenance has not been taken place. What's going to be important for us to ensure that routine maintenance is taking place, we're addressing those areas, and then we're going to have to make sure the money that's already been allocated in the budget goes to those projects and hold ourselves and city officials accountable for that funding that's already been allocated. We also need to look at areas of federal and state funding. My first year on city council, I was able to support a resolution that made Virginia Beach a part of the American Blood Coalition. That coalition provides natural resources to help address flooding within our city. Recently, the BRIC program became available and the coalition alerted me to that. So I alerted our city staff. So we're going to be working on the BRIC program to see how we can address flooding.
Thank you, Sabrina. Rosemary?
Flooding is absolutely one of the things that we've got to be greatly concerned about because if your homes aren't safe, you're not going to want to live here. So we have changed our budget. We were putting 9% of our budget into stormwater, water quality, and sea level rise. And we changed, so we put 23% of our budget into these areas. But it's not going to be enough. We really need to have a bond referendum and go to the people and say, "This is a priority for you to keep your homes safe. Then you need to vote on this. Will you want us to spend more money on it?" And we also, it's very important to get it right. And we've been trying to push the staff and getting quarterly reports and letting them know how important it is. But if you do a project wrong, you could waste millions and millions of dollars. So that planning is very important.
Thank you. Jessica?
Well, it's no secret that this is one of the biggest, if not the biggest, issues to me. We have a critical issue with stormwater infrastructure. We have a critical issue with our maintenance, and we have critical issues facing us in the southern watershed. But we have to be more aggressive, plain and simple. We have to aggressively attack this. This is a public safety issue and it is our number one public safety issue. I have been a supporter of the bond referendum since the beginning of that conversation, and I think that's really what we need to do. We have got to go and get our permits in bulk. We have to try to accomplish these projects in bulk, and we have to scale them in a way that makes them the least, the most affordable for our taxpayers and yields the best result for the people that are going to directly benefit from them.
Thank you. Michael?
Well, thanks to you, I have the privilege to serve from the Rose Hall District, the area that was most significantly impacted in 2016 by Hurricane Matthew. Flooding is not a picture on Facebook. It's not a concept. It's not something that we chatter about and use as a political football. Flooding is real. It disrupts people's lives. My neighbors' homes were flooded. Their property was damaged. But it wasn't just their homes and their property. I'm looking out at the audience and I see people who live in the neighborhood and I know what they've experienced. It's the interruption of our lives. It's the anxiety that people live with when a rainstorm comes. And gosh, to think about a hurricane or tropical storm. So here's what we do. We fund solutions in terms of flood control projects, but more importantly and first and foremost, maintenance and operations. People in Windsor Woods and Green Run and other parts of our city would be happy if the infrastructure just worked at the capacity for which it was designed, and it doesn't because of long-neglected infrastructure neglect. And we will do better.
Thank you, Michael. Conrad?
Last month, I went to council to speak on support of a Prince of San Plaza project to acquire some land to build a pumping station. This is stuff that's going to be needed across the city. We're going to need to make sure we can get as much of the land as possible to build these projects, clear the red tape, make sure you kickstart that bond referendum going, and you've got to get as much supplemental funding from Richmond and DC because otherwise they're going to have to raise your taxes and you don't want that.
Thank you. Eric?
This is really interesting because my opponent's been on city council for two years and she wants to hold him accountable. Tonight is the first night she's held him accountable in two years. So that's very interesting. You know, the thing is, is that, and I'm going to piggyback on what Mike just said. It is real. Myself, Jessica Abbott, and I think the former treasurer, we went through Windsor Woods after Matthew. And I'm going to tell you something. To see those, to see their belongings on their lawns and to see that people's houses were flooded inside was just unpardonable. And that was because there was no drains in their neighborhoods. That's where the city has failed. So I want to work with my councilmates. I want to work with the current council when we get a new representative in Centerville. And we're going to make sure first that we can get the flooding, the maintenance done, the backlog done, and then put this thing to a bond referendum. And let's work this thing out together as a community. It's just, everybody has a bleeding heart until election time. And folks, this stuff happens all year long. And I'm a person, as a film director, as a man of the people, I want to do this all for the next four years for you guys.
Bill?
There are two issues. One is the flooding, and the other is sea level rise. And I think we need to separate the two. The flooding is critical, particularly as it addresses 14 distinct areas within the city. I'm in favor with others who talk about a bond issue. But everybody has to realize that if we do a bond issue, it has to be paid for, okay? And that's an additional expense. And a lot of times, people who are calling for something to do with flooding or other issues are very loud about that. But as soon as they hear it's going to cost something a little bit more, then they kind of back off or find another reason. We need a bond issue. It's going to cost a little bit more, and we should go ahead with it. But we need to make the promise that if a bond issue comes to, the money, all of the money, goes directly to flooding and mitigating the flooding issues. It is not used for anything else. I think if we do that, we restore some faith with the city and we handle a critical need.
Okay, thank you. Nadine, you get the first question this time. So I'm putting these two together. Short-term rentals. "Virginia Beach is a tourist destination. How would you preserve the neighborhoods while still ensuring property rights of its owners so they can make a living? Would you protect existing short-term rentals, especially in Sandbridge, where the tax revenue has remained steady and goes directly to the general fund versus hotels, which have been declining by 40%?" Nadine?
Declining by 40% due to COVID? I'm just, I just want to be clear. Or just declining 40%?
Just declining 40%.
40%, okay. I know that it's happening due to the Airbnb and the short-term rentals. So I'm a public-private, I believe that people should have property rights and they should be honored up until they affect the communal good. So when you, so what I think we need to do, and I think the council has been working on that, albeit a little bit late, because the Airbnb train's been coming down the track for 10 years. So the public's a little bit confused about what they can and cannot do. And we may be making this so difficult that people are going to be doing short-term rentals, you know, illegally. But I do think that having an overlay district and what they're doing there is necessary. And I think very simple rules to follow are necessary so that we don't have to constantly listen to 20 people at the city council with a unique problem. If you don't fit in this box, it's a no. And that would help us. And it would also protect the tourism industry at the oceanfront.
Thank you, Nadine. Sabrina?
I think that it's important for council to find a, or reevaluate the current ordinance we have and find one that works for everyone. It's important to ensure that the short-term rentals in Sandbridge are protected. We need to ensure that if there are violations, that we address those violations quickly and that we have the appropriate staff to do so. Right now, that's something that we're currently working on. But the more we work on enforcement and addressing citizen concerns and complaints, I think the better we'll be. But I believe that the legislation we have, we need to make sure that we apply it to the appropriate circumstance, as long as they follow the rule.
Thank you. Rosemary?
This is a topic that has been a huge struggle for the council and for the community. But I think we're headed in the right direction because right now there are proposals to do overlay districts in the coastal areas, in the Bayside, Lynn Haven, and the old beach areas, that will be a makes sense place for short-term rentals. It does not make sense to us to do short-term rentals in our regular neighborhoods. They have got to be protected. We don't need people moving in and out every week and you don't know who they are or having lineup parties. The other thing is, we were supposed to have some people in the budget this year to help control a lot of this. And that was one of the things that we had to cut out because of the virus and our budget shortfall. So something that we're going to have to look forward to, to have more people to oversee this and make sure that people are following the rules.
Thank you. Jessica?
Well, I deeply believe in property rights. And I think for the most part, people have the right to utilize their assets in the best way that they see fit. I will say, I will asterisk that with, you have those rights until they infringe upon the rights of others. And so we do have to find that balance and that right mix of how we manage short-term rentals. That said, I have been an enormous advocate for using technology to cut out some of the unnecessary stuff, to make our jobs easier. And any revenue we collect from short-term rentals should be going to protect the people that live here full-time. And that shouldn't have a special pot of money that it has to take from the general fund. That should be money. When you get your, when you pay your fees or your taxes, that money should be going to maintain and regulate the quality of life for our residents. And we have to be very, very cognizant of the quality of life. But I do think there are a lot of people, my family included, that look at short-term rentals as a wonderful way to visit our city, and we shouldn't stop people from experiencing that.
Thank you. Michael?
Well, my job is to protect the safety and integrity of our Virginia Beach neighborhoods. And that's what I do. And that's how I see my role in this discussion. We have to find a balance between property rights, right for people to enjoy their property, and to protect and preserve the integrity of our neighborhoods. And that's why I support the overlay districts. And I support the maintaining Sandbridge as it is. Short-term rentals in Sandbridge is very important to the culture and economy there, and it has a long tradition, and I'm fully supportive of that. But I also think that there's areas where short-term rentals don't make sense and they're disruptive to our neighborhoods and they really cut Swiss, they really turn our neighborhoods into Swiss cheese, all little holes. We want to have a neighbor we can borrow sugar from. We want to have a home with young people that our kids can play with. And we want to know our house is safe and looked after when we're out of town. And that's why I don't think short-term rentals are appropriate for Windsor Woods and Green Run neighborhoods and other neighborhoods that are traditionally residential throughout Virginia Beach.
Thank you, Michael. Conrad?
On paper, I like the idea of renting your property. I say this as a hotel worker, so I'm not against short-term rentals due to my profession. My concern would be if the neighbors don't like it. I ran into this at Ares on the Bay Civic League. Their inception agreement forbids this activity. Balance it simply. If it's not prohibited by the HOA, allow it. Enforce required traffic and noise ordinances that may be disrupted by short-term rentals. That's it.
Thank you. Eric?
I am for property rights always, and I will always stand with Sandbridge. Or if not in lane effect, he will kill me. So here's the thing with that, and being for property rights, if someone wants something in Windsor Woods, this is, and you know, people always say, "Oh, well, you know, the conversation is a big cop-out." Sometimes it is in many cases. However, in a case like this, this is when your civic leagues need to be the most active. If you have a community that they might like short-term rentals, and that should be okay, I think I would support that. If your civic league, when they come out for zoning variance and they come out and say no, then we've got, as a council, should say no. If they come out and say yes, then obviously, as a councilperson, we should say yes. So that's, that might be where I break off a little bit, but I do believe in property rights. It's your property. It's your bed. I mean, personally, I don't want anybody sleeping in my bed while I'm gone. But hey, I mean, that might be your thing and you can make a dollar off of it. I'm for it.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I think the city council has been going through a learning experience and doing a really good job with it. We've seen more regulations go on. There's a lot of thought that goes into it. And the feedback is not that, not that bad, not that negative. I fully endorse the overlay district. I think that really makes sense. Different parts of this city are shaped differently and there are different concerns, and people live there for different reasons. I personally have a real problem with absentee landlords, you know, because oftentimes they do not have the same care or concern for the community as people who live here and have their lives invested here. And I think sometimes that's the problem with these B&amp;B setups that are simply an opportunity for somebody to make money off of our community without investing anything back into it. And so continue to develop along the waterfront areas. Keep the interland safe from it. I think it's a road that if you start down, it's really hard to get back down.
Thank you. Gary?
I think what we have here is no trust, no transparency. Firstly, people have been renting their homes and their properties for many years before we decided as the city council to step in and try to actually regulate this industry. Nobody wants a party house with 35 rooms sitting on the beach somewhere with people getting drunk and running everywhere. Of course not. But we've got to support the people and the property rights of the owners. If they so desire, then it is their right. We have to look at the civic leagues and the other areas that, you know, would be of a concern. Look at Wolf Brothers. Do we or do we not give them a variance to have weddings and then why? We've got to look at what we need to do.
15 seconds, Gary.
And this is a learning experience, just like Bill said. And I hope we can actually get on the right side of less regulation and supporting the citizens of Virginia Beach. I intend to have trust and transparency in all areas of our city council.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, so Sabrina, you're going to get the first question this time. "The General Assembly gave localities in Virginia the ability to enact local gun control and create gun-free zones in certain places. If elected, would you support or vote for such gun control? Would you support the VCDL's resolution not to use that code and to not make those public buildings, property and events gun-free zones? And should employees, city employees be permitted to carry concealed firearms at work?" Sorry, I had to put all three of those together, but do you?
I would say from what I'm hearing, it's important. I want to make sure everyone understands. I support the Second Amendment, and I'm on record of saying so many times. But what I'd like to see, and my goal is to ensure that we include everyone in the conversation. We have to make sure that everyone's being included, from those who've been impacted by the May 31 shooting, to those who carry weapons, to those who don't carry weapons. And once I have a chance to make sure that we're having that conversation, making sure that we're bringing our staff in, then that's something I certainly will consider and address accordingly.
Thank you. Rosemary?
I'm glad you asked this question because back in January, the council, we had a resolution whether we were going to support the constitutional amendment, the second constitutional amendment. And when I took my oath of office, I raised my right hand and I swore I was going to support the Constitution. So when this vote came up, it was an easy vote for me because it's our right to do that. And I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that I supported our Second Rights Amendments.
Thank you. Jessica?
We've talked a lot about how the short-term rental discussion has made people confused about what the rules are because they have been so different and they've changed and councils reevaluate it. And I bring this up because that's what I worry about with gun-free zones and this new authority to potentially make some buildings gun-free and some buildings not gun-free. We risk turning honest, regular people who have a right to exercise their Second Amendment right into criminals inadvertently. And that should cause a lot of pause as us, as your council. And it's a deep concern for me because there is nothing I want less than to turn a law-abiding citizen into a criminal. And so I approach that issue with a lot of hesitancy because of that.
Thank you, Michael.
Well, I support all parts of our United States Constitution, including the Second Amendment. And on January 6 of this year, when I had a chance to affirm my support for the Second Amendment, I chose to vote yes, and I'm proud of that vote. Now, on the issue of gun-free zones, this is a complex public policy discussion, and we had a mass shooting event in Virginia Beach. And it's a very sensitive topic with a lot of people with strong emotions and on all parts of the topic. But we have more discussion to have about that. But I know this, gun-free zones are less safe.
Thank you. Conrad?
Now, assuming I win, then I swear an oath to uphold the Constitution. And the Constitution is full-throated that the right to bear arms shall not be infringed. Literally, I shall not sign an agreement prohibiting carrying a gun anywhere, nor an agreement where government employees should be prohibited from carrying because doing so immediately violates my oath. What I'm also not going to avoid the fact, did it the May 31 shooter was stopped from entering the building with his weapons he legally owned, be it through a locked door or personnel who would stop him up front, less lives would have been taken by guns. I'm not going to avoid the fact a firearm is designed to do exactly what you read about in the news day-to-day. And I'm counting police officers as well. I'm counting kids picking up guns and accidentally shooting themselves. That's happened in Virginia Beach. I'm counting the random oceanfront shootings we hear about and any other firearm shooting because that's exactly what guns are designed to do. This is a city that rapidly eliminated e-scooter usage in the beach and other parts of the city because they feared for safety. But they didn't have the courage to try to go after guns, even though doing so immediately violates the oath that we swore. We're hamstrung on this. The amendment is clear and getting rid of it is beyond difficult.
Stop. Sorry. I wasn't looking. Eric?
My opponent just flat-out lied to your face.
Stop.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That was a bold face, because that night, that night, there was a vote against it. I mean, there was a vote, and she voted against it. The next night, after the two-way thing came up, it was a vote to ban guns. I'm sorry. Anybody who wants to ban guns the next night after we make this a sanctuary, have whatever feelings you want to have. But don't come the next night to politicize this. Right after May 31, there was another vote that was going to come to ban guns then. Then right after the two-way, it happened again. That is the biggest enemy to your Second Amendment rights. And folks, if they take that right away, what other rights are they trying to take away from you? I'm sorry, folks. You can say whatever you want to say. This is America and the Constitution, and the Constitution goes first. And we need to tell those people who want to obstruct the Constitution, they can't do that, not in Virginia Beach.
Okay. Sabrina, you were called. Yes, you were called out. You get 30 seconds to rebut that, Sabrina. And you don't get to answer what you said.
Before I make this clear, I didn't lie about anything. Let's clarify. And it's on record. Go back and review it. I said that my concern was the way that it was placed on the agenda. We have certain ways we place items on the agenda, on the agenda. I was concerned about that. And the fact that we have a community who's still healing, I wanted to ensure that we had the proper conversation. Many of you don't know, but they were very hurt by us bringing up that resolution.
Thank you, Sabrina. Okay, Bill, do you need me to read the question again?
No, I don't. You know, if I want to be brutally honest with you, I thought this would be the only question that would come out of the Tea Party tonight, and the rest of it was just fluff. Okay? I support the Second Amendment. All right, no question about that. But I support it with restrictions, and I don't apologize for saying so. I do not feel safe when I walk into a room with a number of people carrying firearms because I have no idea who knows how to use them, who's licensed, who's not licensed. And so my safety feels threatened when I walk into a room with a large number of people carrying firearms. I believe in public property, city-owned property, they should be restricted and not allowed. And I think if they are allowed in those places and something happens, then the city should be held liable and sued for it. My final point is this. When they allow people to carry guns into the Supreme Court or into any court in the United States without any problem, then I'll go back and revision it. But I'm very much concerned that this court that passes these rulings doesn't allow guns in their own house.
Thank you, Bill. Gary?
You know, Bill makes a very valid point. And as a Navy veteran, I took an oath to protect, serve, and defend the Constitution of the United States. And that's all the amendments, not just one, not just two, but all the amendments. And in my service career, I was attached to Weapons Division and also as a weapons instructor. There is no magic age for maturity, and there is no magic age for learning how to handle weapons.
30 seconds.
People handle weapons. And quite frankly, I support the Second Amendment, but I wholeheartedly agree with Bill, the lack of training for weapons. So we're going to have to actually revisit this issue. And I think it was more of a pandering.
15 seconds.
Supporting the Second Amendment because once the city council took their oath, they all supported the Second Amendment, whether they stated so or in time.
Okay. We're going to now have to go to yes-or-no questions. So did you all make little sheets or do I have to ask you? Okay. So the first one. Now that we have dedicated funding for transit, I expect this would probably come back. So do you support extending light rail into Virginia Beach? Okay? Anybody say yes? Bill, yours says yes. Gary, do you say yes or no?
No, I don't support light rail. I support transportation.
Okay, yes or no? Rosemary? Rosemary, did you say yes or no? You said no. And Sabrina, you were?
The citizens already said no.
Okay. So everybody said no except for Bill. All right. "Do you support giving the city manager direction to submit an annual budget without tax increases?" Yes or no?
I can't read, Bill.
So Bill, we can't rejoice.
Do not support the city manager to do what? I lost the part of the question.
Just give him direction to give Just give him direction to give us a budget without tax increases in it. I mean, he gives us a budget.
Oh, absolutely. I support that.
Okay. All right. How do you, do you, would you eliminate the conditional use permits for food trucks? Conditional use for food trucks, would you consider removing that? Everybody, yes?
Less restrictions, the better.
Yes. Bill, what's yours? I can't read yours.
No.
Yours is a no? Okay. Do you support the ARP? Okay. Bill, what are you?
That's a yes.
Yours is a yes. Nadine? Gary?
Yes.
I suppose so. Open the green line. Yes.
Would you support BLM, Black Lives Matter, to paint Black Lives Matter on the boardwalk? Did anybody say yes to that?
Conrad?
Conrad said yes. Gary, is that a yes or a no for you?
No, I believe that's a no, and the reason is, we need to look at...
Okay, Gary, this is a yes or no? Okay. Do you support defunding the police?
Conrad.
Yes. Anybody else say yes? Sabrina, you were a no? And Gary, you were a no? Okay. All right. Do you, would you support reparations?
Or ho.
Oh, well, for descendants of slaves.
What kind of reparations?
It's a yes or no question.
It's not a good question.
Okay. Money. So, Conrad's a yes.
Sabrina was a yes.
Sabrina was a yes.
Yes.
And Bill? You were a no. Okay. All right. Do you support a referendum on district voting? Okay, Michael, no.
Eric, can't make a combined.
Nadine and Gary can't see yours, yes. Gary, what are you?
We need more clarity on district voting. The General Assembly would make the...
Yes or no, Gary? Yes or no? No, you don't, okay, so I'll just put a question mark next to you. Okay. So, now, okay. Anyway, so now, we're going to go to closing statements, so Rosemary, you get to start.
Thank you for having us tonight, and I really enjoyed being part of this and hearing everybody's positions on things. I think in this time of crisis, it's going to be really important to be able to move things forward and have the experience to do that rather than on-the-job training. We have a great city, we have a AAA bond rating, same city of our size, and all of our schools are accredited, and we are very financially sound, and we've done a lot of good things to keep the city going in time, in this crisis. I've never had to experience anything like this in my entire life, or what we had with May 31st. The city has been through a lot, but I know that for good citizens like all of you in that room and the people that are around us and people that are going out to vote, we're going to all get through this, and we're going to be stronger and better for it. Be strong.
Thank you. Sabrina?
I've been on council less than two years. Since that time, I've been very productive and worked with council to ensure that we were able to pass over 11 resolutions within my first year or so. Those resolutions focused on local, supporting local businesses, addressing flooding, also ensuring that we support our public safety. I will continue to do that as I receive support to be re-elected to city council. Now, as I said before, I know we don't agree on everything, but I would like to focus on the things we do agree on. That's the Second Amendment. That's addressing flooding, that's supporting public safety, and supporting our local businesses. So, again, November 3rd, I ask for your support. For more information, you can go to sabrina wooton dot com. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Nadine?
I agree that experience is valuable, but all of the residents of the city of Virginia Beach come to the table with experience. We have lived and worked here, we have been actively involved in this community, and some of us deserve a chance to sit there and help shift Virginia Beach for the next 50 to 100 years so that we protect our children and their children from flooding, from overdevelopment, from businesses going under. I believe that I have experience in several areas that can be of value to the city and a very fresh perspective on how to move forward, so I ask for your vote on November 3rd.
Thank you. Gary?
Yes, I look at this as a twofold thing, with Rosemary and the rest of the city council, and the time that they've spent on the city council, as the on-the-job training they're against. Quite frankly, I'm the only businessman that's actually run a apprenticeship program, so I understand what on-the-job training truly means. We've forever have kicked a proverbial flooding can down the road, but we've got to actually look at our old and outdated infrastructure, and we've got to look at our revenue shortfall that's going to be increasing. Even though that we're having a better average increase than most of the coastal cities, we've got problems that we've got to discuss. Without trust and transparency from our development authority to the city council, to actually understanding what we have to do to move our standing forward, and the people that have the experience as a businessman and a military man, I have that experience to do that. We've trusted the city council for the last few years, and when you have three feet of water...
Thank you, Gary.
In three, five years, that's not a complaint.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Bill?
You know, the best part about living in this city, and it's a great city to live in, is we can sit down with people who probably disagree about everything, but I can look around that room and see a number of people that I call friends, and even though we disagree, we probably still remain friends, and the best part of that all is the disagreements that take place. My starting point is, everybody here wants what is best for this city and what is best for the people who live here. Where we differ is the path that we want to take to get there, and that's always worth discussing, arguing, laughing about whatever, as long as we don't take it personally, and as long as it doesn't create personal animosity. I think the city is in much better shape than sometimes we give it credit for, and that's a credit to the leadership of the city, not only the present leadership, but the past leadership. And I think if we continue on this path, the city's going to see only better and brighter days ahead. I ask for your vote going forward.
Thank you, Bill. Eric?
Are you going to make this one?
Yes, Eric, yes, we're closing arguments.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much for being here tonight. To, you know, this is a, this is a really big election, and we have a lot at stake, and people are friends at the end of the day, but we are fighting a different fight than we fought 20 years ago. We're fighting to not be Portland, Seattle, Baltimore, Chicago. We're fighting to remain Virginia Beach. We don't have a perfect city council, not at all, but we have a great city council. We need to keep our sanctity of our city, and we need to eliminate Centerville and make sure that we add it with Eric Ray, because with Eric Ray on city council, we can make sure that we want to get back to our Virginia Beach family. We need to make sure that our elected officials aren't celebrities. You are privy to what I, to what I, to what I know. You should know every single thing that I know, and you will never be talked down to. Why I'm in this race is because you, during the Second Amendment, the odds were rolled at you because they didn't want to hear what you had to say. They don't care.
Thank you, Eric.
Go all the way with Eric Ray in November.
Thank you, Eric. Conrad?
I see a city with big needs, flooding fixes, rapid bus transit, diverse economic pillars, low cost of living, an equitable socially-justed community, so I set out to be a candidate, one who's deliberately aiming to work on those. I want to work for district voting, I want to work to minimize big development in the city at the cost of the sanctity of a neighborhood. I'll be there on Election Day going forward for the people. Vote Conrad.
Thank you. Michael?
Well, I'm Michael Berluci, and I'm really proud to serve you on our city council, and I want to thank you for spending time together this evening and for sharing a few ideas. I want to give a shout-out and thank you to the people online, too. Thanks to everyone who joined us. You know, last year, you gave me, you put your trust in me by overwhelmingly elected me to serve for an unexpired term, and I'm just here before you to simply ask for your vote one more time so that I have a chance to continue, we have a chance, to continue the work we started in this last year together. We know what the issues are, we talked about them tonight. I think in this last year, I've had a chance to develop a reputation as a person who collaborates, who works well, who's serious on policy, does my homework, understands the issues we all face as a community, and who listens, and I'm proud of that. And I would be very honored if you will vote for me on November 3rd or if you vote before, anytime before, so I have a chance to continue to work with you to make our city even better. Thanks, I'm Michael Berluci, and I'd be honored to have your vote.
Thank you, Michael. Jessica?
Thank you. In 2016, I ran for city council because service is a part of my soul. I grew up with a family that didn't have much, but what we did have was a mother who told me, you're going to get out and you're going to volunteer, and that started my journey from a young age, and it is, it is an integral part of who I am. I want to continue doing this job because I want to continue to serve the people of Virginia Beach. I want nothing more than to be your advocate. I want to advocate for our small businesses who get overlooked a lot. I want to advocate for our residents that don't have the time or the means to...
My video is not, I cannot hear any video.
I'm sorry. I want to advocate for the people who don't have the means or the connections to ask their representatives how to be, what, for the things that they need. This is a service-oriented job, and if you're in it for any other reason than to serve the city of Virginia Beach, then you're in it for the wrong reasons. And I, and I plan to continue to do that, and I hope to earn your support whenever you choose to vote, or on November 3rd. Thank you.
Let's thank all of our council representatives and our candidates for coming. Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming here and answering our questions, and good night. Thank you so much. The forum is over. Okay?